This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting Public Session for Tuesday, October 26th. And welcome to French Road Elementary School, commonly referred to as FRES. This is another one of our sessions that we're doing at the schools. Some of you who watch remember that we were at Council Rock last month. We have upcoming visits to BHS and TCMS. And we're overjoyed and thrilled to be here. To begin with, I'll call the meeting to order and begin with public participation. And we have Malaney Bernhardt signed up to speak tonight. Malaney?
Hello.
Hello there.
It's me again. I don't have any handouts today, so I'm just gonna read. I'm just gonna read something. Because I always show up in this shirt Moms for Liberty, so I just want to talk a little bit more about what it is. Because I'd like to address the partisan nature of public school education and the organization that exists to support it. As we attend board meetings across our area, because we all support each other in multiple districts, not just this district, it's kind of, we're starting to see a pattern. And every board seems to be working with the same agenda. Every superintendent has a similar plan for the year. We also hear buzzwords like equity, social-driven criteria, et cetera. And the boards across the state appear to have a highly organized, policy-driven agenda. So each school as a teachers' association is a union and a subset of the state teachers' union, NYSUT. We are all aware of the union and its role in public education. The New York State Board Association is a 501(c)(4) and is for board members. The Superintendent Council is a 501(c)(3), an organization to support superintendents. All three of these organizations serve the purpose of its members. So teachers, administrators, superintendents, and even Board of Education members have a professional level of organization within public education. Each group advocates for policies within schools that work to affect legislation at the state level. Remarkably, when you review all the websites, the mission statements are very similar. One could draw the conclusion that education is political. But when I use the term "political," I'm not referring to political parties. I'm referring to a coordinated system that operates in public schools. But I want you to visualize a table. And I see many people coming to the table to affect change in the educational arena. One leg is the superintendent within their council, another is the board with their professional organization, and another is the teachers with the unions. But this is three legs of the table. The fourth one that's kind of missing is the parents and taxpayers. And we just need a seat at the table and to be considered one of the pillars holding up this whole educational system. And we have recently been characterized and treated as adversary instead of a partner. And I know a lot of you are aware of what happened and it got redacted because we're considered domestic terrorists for just showing up at these meetings. So we're justifiably frustrated. And the conversation seems one-sided much of the time because the policies of the board's members are not to discuss their personal opinions about our schools publicly. School staff members have protection of privacy, which we understand has its place. But as parents, we know very little what's truly going on in the classrooms and behind closed doors. So I'm coming to you today as a parent, a taxpayer, concerned about some of the policies that are in our schools. I also come today as just a member of Moms for Liberty. And Moms for Liberty is a 501(c)(4) organization that exists solely to promote parents' rights and choice in public education. We exist to also help affect legislation and policy in our county and our state. It's truly a grassroots organization, working alongside parents to support them in everything we do. So there is a systemic problem that currently exists in education, which is a serious lack of representation for true constituents, which is the parents. And our hope as parents and taxpayers is that we can change this by coming to the table and starting a dialogue where we, you know, respectful and constructive debate can begin. And that's all I wanted to say about our organization. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to come, Malaney. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Larry.
Yeah, I just, Malaney, again, I know I start this every time, and I mean it sincerely, respectfully. I just want to clarify a couple of things. We've never labeled anybody here a domestic terrorist. The parents in this district have never had any public comment or participation in board meetings restricted. You literally have a seat at the table. Peter Wegman represents the PTSA at that seat at that table. The amount of parent input and engagement with us on any number of issues all the time is pretty significant in this district. So I recognize there's a different perspective from the group, the Moms of Liberty, on action taken by the federal government with regard to the National School Boards Association letter requesting help. Because in many parts of the country, board members and educators have been attacked and treated very poorly. There has been no effort whatsoever to limit public comment or feedback in this environment. So I can't speak for other districts. I can say I understand why that happened on a national level. Simply asking that the meetings be conducted in a way that has some sense of decorum and sets an example for the kids that we teach in terms of civil discourse, I think is pretty reasonable. But I'll come back to, again, this space and this place. I'd be happy to talk to you about other districts, other places, and organizations offline. I don't think it's relevant for this space right here and for the way this district is operated. And the meetings are policy-heavy. They are Board of Education meetings, and the primary role of the board is to discuss educational policy. And so that is the role of the board on a larger scale. So I appreciate that feedback. I'm not sure what those organizations have to do with that debate or that discussion. NISBA, the state organization, supports board members through professional development. And yes, advocacy for schools and for kids, primarily around funding for schools and kids, as does the Council of School Superintendents, which again provides professional development and advocacy for legislation benefiting students in schools. And doesn't typically take positions on particular curricular issues, et cetera, but rather more the mechanisms around supporting school districts. So again, if you'd like to talk offline about it too, I'd be happy to get into that further with you and provide you with more feedback and information. Thanks.
I'll just a couple of quick comments, but we have a long meeting tonight. I appreciate you've given us some other sources to look at. Personally, I've looked at a few of them because I respect you, and will continue to look at some of those things. The seven members of the board are elected by the community. All are taxpayers, three are current parents, four are past parents. If I did my math right, there might be four are current parents and three are past parents. I may have done that backwards. But so we've been involved in the schools. We understand what's going on. Nobody can make everybody happy, but we have a great look into all the work that is being done. We know some of the things we're going to look at will be more emotional or perhaps challenging for some than others, but they all need to be debated publicly and in front of everyone. We're gonna share some points of views. We respect all points of views that come. And as the superintendent said, who also happens in some communities, the superintendent lives in the community and some they don't. This superintendent happens to live in the community, so he's a taxpayer and a parent. But it's incredibly important because we represent everyone. The voices we agree with as well as the voices we don't agree with. So we're happy to have any voice come in and give their opinions and in some cases, ask questions. This isn't built as a question and answer. It's built as an inform and hear. But I hope we continue to hear a lot of different voices in terms of the things we're doing. And I understand how charged it is at a federal level and even sometimes at a state level. We're affecting change here at a town level, and we have a lot of different voices. Going back three years, there was a lot of voices against the Capitol project with concerns going on with some of those things. And we hear concerns a lot, views that I don't specifically agree with, but we gotta hear them. So we hope that the discourse remains respectful. And I believe, at least in this community, everyone wants the best for our kids. There are some different ideas on how to get there, but everyone wants what's best for the kids. So I will say that there are parents and taxpayers represented at this table. And I greatly appreciate you taking the time to come and explain your points of view because I think it's important to hear. We're gonna keep moving along in the agenda. I do need an approval for tonight's, the motion to approve tonight's agenda, as was sent to us.
So moved, second?
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Karen. I should note for all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Shout out to Lou Alima, who is our substitute clerk tonight. So he might be asking me to slow down or repeat something once or twice. My thanks to Lou for doing the recording for tonight's meeting so we stay within the rules and the frame. Approval of the minutes from October 12th, which was our last board meeting. Motion to approve those minutes. Any changes, edits, corrections? Moved by Julene?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, we're gonna go on to the principal reports. And typically, we go in age order, but we're in Marin and Caitlin's building tonight. So Marin gets to go first tonight. I'm sorry, I did not mean age of the principals. I meant age order of the students. Let's just be clear there. I don't want to get involved in any of that. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Stop pointing at people, Tom Hall. Stop pointing at people.
Thank you, Tom. All right, welcome. Happy Tuesday. We have been up to some wonderful things here at French Road. Some things I wanted to highlight in our presentation is just really some of the things that students and families have brought up to be things that are really important to them and some things that are sort of like the underpinnings of our day, such as morning announcements, where we celebrated White Cane Day on October 15th. And we have a teacher for the visually impaired, Drew Bosse, who is part of our staff daily. And we have a student who benefits, two students actually, who benefit from her instruction for various amounts of time, depending on their needs. And so we shared with all students via our video announcements what White Cane Day is. One of our third grade students was actually able to present to his classroom and share about the importance. Actually, White Cane Day talks about the development of the cane that's used for folks who are visually impaired and how it used to be a black cane and a man, I think dating back to the 1930s, yes, was crossing a busy street and found that motorists weren't able to easily see him. So he then further led some innovations which developed the white cane with the red stripe that we see today. So we shared this with all students. And our third grade student also did a little presentation around using braille in the classroom and just what it's like to navigate his world daily, to sort of demystify that for his class. And what led was a really, what followed, rather, was a really wonderful conversation among that group of students. So we were glad to share that with our students. This week is Red Ribbon Week. And given that we participated with the high school around Spirit Week earlier this school year already, we chose to take a little bit of a different approach here, where we really tried to focus Monday through Thursday around different mindfulness and wellness topics with participating and actually talking about what mindfulness is with students, showing them our wellness suite that's available through the district website, talking about giving compliments to folks, really just leading kids and encouraging kids to interact with one another and interact with students who they may not typically interact with, and reminding them about healthy choices and taking time to spend with family. So just kind of grounding ourselves in those things we know are helpful. Something else happening is through our primary project facilitator, Ms. Lydia Keiner, who is phenomenal. I've worked with Lydia for a while. She used to be a sub back at Council Rock and now is our primary project facilitator here at French Road. And she is leading some of these wonderful folks here in our new student club lunch, which she runs for a series of weeks at the beginning of the year, where she'll go through and actually enjoy lunch with several kids and then just kind of lead them through discussions and topics and help them sort of navigate the building, navigate meeting new friends, learn more about each other, share some things about their past experiences, and kind of develop connections that way. She also supports some students who might be going through a challenging time, more traditionally through the primary project approach. But then she also is able to connect with kids in lots of wonderful ways. And so these groups, I've walked past them daily, and they always are having such a great time connecting. So I wanted to make sure to include them. Our early morning activities are back in action. And actually, our intermurals are going to be starting up within the next two weeks as well. And it was one of those moments, you know, Dr. Leener shared at the last meeting about just that feeling of seeing students play for the first time. And so I actually took a video of one of these groups walking in on them being able to play together for the first time. And I was really just blown away. And I think the kids were too. They kind of stopped and all kind of looked around at each other, kind of like, did we just do that? So it's wonderful, the buzzing in the building at 7:45 in the morning. You can feel it when you walk through the door, and it's awesome. It's a great way to start the day. And we have a really large number of students participating, which is really great to see. And we've been able to organize the activities so students don't have to feel like they're choosing an intermural or a music activity. They're able to do both, which is really great. We have been the lucky recipients of being able to share the talents of Mrs. Stefana Monacino between Council Rock and French Road this year. And so she is an instructional math specialist. And these are some photos from students working in her classroom. She's pairing with a couple of teachers as they navigate the first few math units and just sort of adjusting to students, identifying the skills that students are bringing to the table this school year and maybe some areas in which we could use some additional remediation or reteaching, just given the various places students might have come to us from or their experience in remote learning the last year and a half or so. And so these photos are of kids utilizing the just about floor-to-ceiling whiteboards in her classroom. She really wants to get kids up and out of their seats. They're doing some group work and thinking about a problem that's presented to the class. And then they are called on to share their thinking and lead the discussion about how they chose to solve the problem, while the rest of the class kind of engages in an "I agree" or "disagree" or "have a new way to solve" type of conversation. So that was something I was able to catch last week that was really special. I have also been participating with our mental health staff weekly in our Bruin Time, which is where our counselors and social workers are spending time with each classroom, where they will be eventually rolling out our second step curriculum. Right now, we're taking time to engage in circles and community building with each class. And so I've been able to go into the classrooms and share a story with the students, many of which have been third grade classes, which is just extra special because those students are very close to me in that we all kind of came here new together. So it's been just something exciting to share. And this is some student work after we read "I Promise" by LeBron James and circled up around some promises that we can make to ourselves and to others and some connections with our star qualities. So that's been really fun to involve myself with. Some upcoming events, we've got lots going on. Our mental health staff is going to be joining me in the PTSA meeting with the principal coming up later this week. And we're gonna be talking a little bit more about restorative practices and engaging families in a circle and helping them to understand what students are experiencing throughout the day. Our PTSA, we also were able to kind of think quickly. And when roller skating wasn't an option, we were able to make a go of it with bingo. So we're gonna be hosting some bingo for third, fourth, and fifth grade students here in November, mid to end November, and then in December. It was kind of tricky working around a busy time of the year, but they're so committed to this and to serving our students. So it's gonna be a blast, and I can't wait to see it happen. And then right around the same time, we're also gonna be hosting the book fair here with a family night. It's gonna be great to get back to some of those things that we've missed out on here in the last little bit. And then, starting on the 19th, we'll begin our early release days as we get into parent-teacher conferences through the month of November. So that'll be something new that we'll just be communicating, the dismissal time and getting things rolling a little bit earlier. So, there aren't any questions? Mr. Tappan?
I know we're gonna hear more about the building improvements in just a minute after that. So we'll cover a number of things here. The roof is getting a great test today, the new roof up there. We won't make anybody go up and look at that, but Lou and the team will talk about that as well. Any questions for Marin? All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Principal Tappan?
So Dr. Hall was kind enough to point to me when if we did go by age order, I would be going last. So I appreciate, I appreciate being able to go second, President. All right, so Council Rock, we've had an exciting few weeks, much like French Road. You'll see lots of connections here between our buildings. We also are celebrating Red Ribbon Week. At Council Rock, we celebrate kindness and talking about how to make connections with people. So we have a theme day for each day, a theme for each day. So today was Silly Sock Day. Lots of kids were very excited to see, I have socks with my own face on them and wear my pants on the outside, so they got to see them. Tomorrow's Brighton Gear and then Pajama Day on Thursday. And you all know how it ends on Friday, right? Yeah, we're preparing for it. So Halloween is coming, and we're excited about it. But we're, and we're very thankful for it to be on a Friday again, or the celebration of it on a Friday because it really is hard when it's not on a Friday. So we also had welcomed back, talking about getting to some level of normalcy. We did have the fire department, Brighton Fire Department, and so thankful to have them back for fire safety presentations for all grades. It did look a little bit different. The kindergartners still got to tour a fire truck and see a fire truck in person. We did not host the trailer that, because it's a really tight trailer. So we talked about how to get out and plan your exit drills. But each grade and each class was able to work with the fire department and do some fire safety presentations. The PTSA brought back our Fun Food Friday. So our first Fun Food Friday was pumpkin seeds to celebrate the season. Students were allowed to choose whether they tried pumpkin seeds or not. And then in my newsletter this week, we'll be following up with recipes if kids really like them. And I hear beets are on the agenda for November. So I just want to talk a little bit about breakfast at lunch at Council Rock. So our amazing staff is really tackling the challenge that is breakfast and lunch. So first, this is the first year that we've had breakfast at Council Rock. And we are currently serving between 140 and 150 students breakfast and getting them into the routine of that. And then lunch is averaging 358. Their high was 375 for the building. And just to put it in perspective, typically, they would serve about 200 in regular years. So Patty Luce is our food manager, food service manager, and her team just constantly thinking about how can we do better for our kids and making sure that kids have what they need. So I really want to, you know, shout out the appreciation to them because they've been doing a phenomenal job in figuring out how to do it best to serve our kids. So as I walked around the building in preparation, there were a lot of themes. So kindness, fall, apples, and monsters. Those kind of were the themes that I saw coming up over and over. So our kindergartners are doing a lot of great work with apples, but within that theme, learning to make bar graphs, learning to how to graph and understand information, also learning the science of apples. So that's being celebrated kind of across the kindergarten. First grade, this is monster writing. So they are doing procedural writing based on the book, If Your Monster Won't Go to Bed, by Denise Vega. So first, then, next, and last, and really learning what they have to do and figuring out how they would put their monster to bed. Second graders are connected, we're connecting kindness and fall. And this is Ashley Youngman's class, talking about how their acts of kindness made their jack-o'-lantern smile. So a lot of writing connections. And then a special project, actually, that was done by Nicole Urlees, who is our rep here tonight for the teachers' association, as well as Ashley Youngman. After reading Lois Ellert's book, Leaf Man, really doing some great work. And they made use of our Makerspace for the first time in the way that it was intended. So we got some great pictures of them. And here are students at work, and here's what they did. They foraged for materials, got into the flow of thinking about it, thought of an insect or a basic shape and created that insect, and then took a picture from the bird's eye view. And here were some of their awesome, really inspiring designs and creations that they came up with. And so kudos to them. And the kids really enjoyed the extra space to be able to just spread out and be able to not be within their own classroom space. It was really great to be able to use the Makerspace, so. And then, very exciting, our therapy dog at Council Rock began her first day on Monday. She is in Jill Davis', so she is Jill Davis, our new music teacher's therapy dog. Her name is Winnie, and she is as kind and wonderful as you would expect. And here are just some pictures from the first few days of the smiles and the amazingness that she has already brought to Council Rock. I love her, contrary to all the belief that Mr. Tappin doesn't love dogs. Mr. Tappin loves dogs, and he is so glad to have Winnie here. And she is just as kind, and the kids really just enjoy everything about her. So again, upcoming dates, we've got Red Ribbon Week. We've got Halloween celebrated on Friday. We are welcoming, as long as it's nice out, parents to the bus loop for a 9:15 or a 1:30 parade. Teachers should have communicated which ones they were signed up for. We will welcome parents outside. We can't have them inside, but we'd love to have people come in. Our bus loop is nice and large, so we should be able to spread out. Picture Retake Day is Tuesday, the 9th of November, and then no school on the 11th. And I want to echo, I didn't add it in here, but it wasn't on the original calendar. So I want to make sure Marin talked about it, the addition of the 19th of November as a parent-teacher conference. And at Council Rock, we will communicate all dismissal information, but it will be 11:30 dismissal for our students, having the buses roll at 11:30. So, any questions?
Any questions for Principal Tappan? Thank you very much. Dr. Hall?
Oh, my goodness. Now we are, nope, that's FRES. I'm coming. Oh, there it is.
Okay, evening, everybody. I cannot believe we're two months in and Halloween is on the way. We continue with our "Over the Nose is How It Goes" campaign. We've kind of, again, continuing to reiterate what our policy is and kind of made this as part of our flavor to take the push off a little bit, but still requiring it, obviously. And so far, so good, continuous reminders. We're very excited, though, to have back our Brighten Your Day Cafe. And this year, which is very special, unfortunately, I think in some of the other buildings, you won't be able to see them due to some of the COVID restrictions and trying to travel. But with our students who are putting this on in one of our classrooms, they have set up the coffee shop in our bookstore. And we'll serve, if you're generally in the morning, anywhere between 8:30 and 9:45. You can grab a cup of coffee. My favorite's the pumpkin spice. And you can also pick up some snacks. Of course, you gotta give a little bit of a tip. But some really friendly workers and doing a phenomenal job. Ms. Pomeroy, who's filling in for the teacher of that classroom, is doing incredible work. And the kids absolutely love it, and I just love going down and starting my day. Do it a great job. Our counseling department has been extremely active, as usual. We've had our 12th grade parent nights, three of them actually this year. And they've, every year, they've taken parent feedback and have taken that to heart and developed programs based on what they're hearing. And they created three nights this year. One night that's all about the college process, one night all about financial aid, and then one night that's devoted just to the military, the trades, and other career explorations or gap years. And we haven't always done that, and I just want to give them a huge kudos for doing that. They're also put on an overview parent night for our ninth grade parents. You know, a lot of new things coming at them in this first year, especially if it's their first child at the high school. And our counselors, very well attended, and I will have to say, most people are now attending via Zoom and not necessarily in person. Our club fair, which took place back during the homecoming week, but I didn't, that was after the board meeting. We had, we have the tent out back, of course. You can't really see it from this angle. But we had everybody set up outside. We had probably close to 60 of our 75-plus clubs with tables. Students could go out during flex, fourth period, fifth period, and sixth period. And thanks again, it's a whole group effort from our custodial crew to security to the teachers and the students who are advisors of these groups or work with these groups and the advisors helping out. We had our first culture-climate leadership team made up of representatives from class councils, executive council, and all of these different groups and clubs come together each. We're having at least one monthly meeting to talk about issues at the high school. And the whole point, again, as you've heard, is to improve the culture-climate of BHS. And the whole point, again, as you've heard, is to improve the culture-climate of BHS. With a diverse student body, we have parents and our faculty. We're reviewing data, our culture-climate surveys. Everything kind of filters through our CCLT now, and it's been a fantastic opportunity for me to see kids more often and talk to them about the issues of the day. And our whole mission is just to improve the culture-climate of the high school. We have our next meeting coming up this Thursday. Part of that first meeting, we developed four different subcommittees of CCLT. One of them will be putting together our new culture-climate student survey. We do that every two years. Mr. Colm is overseeing that. They'll be developing our new survey coming up in the spring. Ms. Vigiani and myself will be overseeing our Sexual Misconduct Education Subcommittee. We have a Student Policy Subcommittee with Ms. Moser, reviewing everything in the Parents/Student Handbook, getting student input on the policies that we have. And Ms. Edwards will oversee our Multicultural Collage Subcommittee. We have a grant with several, a few thousand dollars to put together murals, artwork, you name it. I think they're going to be very creative in coming up with some phenomenal opportunities for our kids to demonstrate the diversity of our building, but also that everybody is represented and welcome at Brighton High School. One of the events that came out of our CCLT that we had a lot of participation on last week, it's October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And each one of those pink flags that's planted in the ground is four different calls made by survivors of domestic violence. And there were 4,000 flags put out on that lawn. And you can see, if you go by the high school, you'll see signs saying healthy and unhealthy relationships in the household. And again, I appreciate all that they did. Esports, this is just a preview to come. Can't wait to actually get the kids in there, but we actually have, set up a room up in our third floor. It's a student help office area by day. And by afternoon and evening, it turns into the esport room. And there's six brand-new computers, high-powered gaming computers. And we have an esports team, which you should already know about. And for the last two years, they've taken first place in New York State for esports. More to come about what that is, and I'm actually hoping to have a few students eventually explain more of that. Our link crew and senior seminars, in combination with administrators and counselors, going in, and I will say that we're probably one of the very few schools who dedicate as much time as we do to talk to kids about DASSA, which was, you know, written back in 2012, 2013. We have done that every year, and we're rolling that out now, talking about social media, group chats, cyberbullying, and how that can lead to teen suicide. And then there are just digital footprints as young men and women in high school and what all of these things they do on social media may have an effect them down the road. And that's something we've been doing for a while, but really coming at it full steam this year. Part two, so one period is spent on part one with DASSA. Part two is all about sexting, sexual harassment, misconduct, and acts or threats of violence in schools. If you see something, say something, what would you do scenarios. If you ever watched that ABC special where they put people in situations, say, what would you do? We do that with the students, and then pause before you post. That's not only for students, but adults as well and for, you know, everybody. You can certainly learn a lot. Our entrepreneurship classes going around, one of our newest teachers, Corey Wright, in the business department, was taking his students through kind of a, an opportunity for kids to really get to know each other, collaborate. He used to be in the business world, and these are some of the activities that they actually did to learn as you're starting a business, all the different skills and opportunities that you must be comfortable with if you're really going to start a business. And going through everything you can see on the right, really doing a phenomenal job and really excited for the work that Corey's doing, and the kids were having a great time. Look at that picture. We could not do that last year, but we do have it for the class of 2022. Our senior picture taken out the second day of school with our seniors. And of course, homecoming. I, our exec council, and we have one of our members, Lila over there, came up with these phenomenal, just easy schedules for all of homecoming, the themes for the week. They developed that themselves, posted around school, tons and tons of participation. They were debating whether or not they'd like to be inside or outside again next year. Throughout all the activities, of course, we had the Joshua Loa presentation with the soccer team. Just thought that was a phenomenal picture. All the students standing, watching, listening, you could have heard a pin drop and the soccer team there with his family dedicating the picture with the signed shirts from the team. And then, of course, our, our classes in the parade, seniors, juniors. A phenomenal float by the seniors, I will say. They won homecoming. And then we had some excitement, unplanned excitement, with some smoke in the crowd, some red, white, and blue smoke, but that was quickly kind of doused out. But it was a fun night, and you look at all those colors. It was really phenomenal to see everybody together and just having a lot of fun. End of the marking period, November 16th. We start quarter two on the 17th. Parents/Student Portal grades will be out just in time for Thanksgiving. So if you want to look up those grades, Wednesday on their first day of the holiday, they can do that, and our next culture-climate meeting. Veterans Day, of course, we have off in November on the 11th. And this Friday, Saturday, Fall Play Blood Relations in the BHS auditorium. Recommended ages 14 and up, from seven to nine. And that's it. Lots happening at the high school for sure. And I love the dogs Mr. Tappin has had to say. Congratulations.
Any questions for Dr. Hall? Thank you very much. Now, and last but not least, we have Danielle Edmonds in TCMS.
12 Corners. I should just let you do it.
Likely would have been quicker.
Good one, Larry. Love it.
Edmonds. That's okay. I was hoping not to go first, but I was also hoping not to go last. But here we are. So I'm so excited to be able to talk about all the amazing things that are going on at 12 Corners Middle School. The past week has been absolutely amazing. The kids have been engaged in, in great social activities and lots of learning. So I'm excited to share a little information about that. First of all, going back to the beginning of the month, our last group, our last team participated in their outdoor ed experience. So these are just some great pictures and lots of smiles from the experience that students were able to have. Little adapted this year, but so much fun nonetheless and great team bonding experience for all of our students, not just for the students, but for the students and the teachers as well. In October, we've been running our activity nights. We've already had sixth and seventh grade activity night. And this Friday, we have eighth grade activity night. The numbers have been fantastic, and the PTSA, they have been rocking this. It is so organized and structured. It has been such a great part to be a part, or a great thing to be a part of. Students are engaged in ping pong and basketball, and there is a DJ, and there's dancing going on, bingo games, some poker games, photo booth. Everybody was having so much fun, so much smiling, a face painting station. So we look forward to this Friday, when the eighth graders come. They are able to wear their costumes, so we're excited to see what that's all about with some, you know, Halloween energy as well. So we look forward to that. Our Shinshinim volunteers are here at TCMS. About a week and a half ago, they were in Amy Moran's class, and they were teaching her students how to make chocolate falafel. So they gave some history behind it and why it's such a treasured dessert. And, and then they worked with the students in order to help them prepare it. Our Shinshinim volunteers are going to be here throughout the year, and they're working in a variety of classes. I believe that some are working at BHS as well. So it's a great opportunity. We already have, I think, at least six or seven more opportunities at TCMS where they're going to go into different classes and participate in different activities. And thankfully, they're here from a partnership between the Jewish Federation of Rochester and the Jewish Agency for Israel. So we're super excited to have them. They prepared a nice little presentation for our faculty meeting yesterday to tell our staff who they were and what they were about. So it, it's going to be a great year with them. TCMS Strong has been up and running since, actually, the summer when they started doing orientation activities for our incoming sixth graders. But particularly in the month of October, their focus is really around bringing awareness to bullying as October is Bullying Prevention Month. So they've gone into our sixth grade classes to speak to them about bullying, and they've had the, the students planned interactive activities to do with sixth graders. And they've gone in during WINTIME. And then seventh and eighth grade students have had conversations with their WINT teachers about bullying on a particular topic that has been introduced each morning on our morning show. And we're ending the month with being Upstander Contest, which students are already showing me. Today in lunch, I had a handful of kids showing me their artwork and their writing and how excited they are to participate in the contest. So it's, it's created a nice buzz, a nice positive atmosphere at TCMS, and we're really appreciative of all their work. And of course, they've also been at our activity nights, maybe having a little fun themselves, but also definitely taking care of the sixth and seventh graders and making sure that they're having the best time possible. One of the things, I wanted to, to take a look at our, our library, and I know you'll have an opportunity to tour it in another month or so. But I remember when Mrs. Lambert was hired, I sat on the interview committee for her. And one of the things that she told us in that interview committee years ago was that her vision for the library was for it to be the absolute hub of our building. And in walking through the, the library in the past week or so, there is no doubt she's achieved that goal. It's an amazing place, both, you know, visually, but it's also amazing in terms of what students are doing in there. We've got students who are doing some kind of like stress reduction, where they're doing puzzles and, and, and being social, but in a very calming way. We have other students that are volunteering to create different displays for genres of the month. And then we have teachers like Ms. Whipple, who are taking advantage of some of the grant opportunities that Mrs. Lambert has engaged in in order to use texts to support their curricular areas. So fantastic place to be, so much energy, yet so much learning going on as well. And it's really exciting to, to be in there. Last week, our Black, the TCMS Black Student Union has started working on the Rock Garden of Peace. So these are some pictures of, of some of our students in Ms. Kerr's room. And they are creating a rock garden of peace in memory of John McFadden, who was a TA in 12 Corners Middle School, and he passed away about 10 years ago. And they're going to kind of sprinkle these throughout our inner courtyard area. So it was really neat to see, first of all, Ms. Kerr picked some amazing rocks. The designs on them to begin with, without any paints, were amazing. But to watch the kids kind of attack them and, and their thought process through them was, was pretty amazing. So that was fun to see. They're continuing it tomorrow. They'll have their rocks finished tomorrow. This was an exciting project that students are doing in Ms. Carter's Art VII class. And it's funny, just listening to the students while they're working on this, because they said, we wish we could do this project for the entire marking period. They had so much fun with it. Basically, they're using quilling tools and some strips of colored paper to just come up with various shapes and create their mandolas. So it was really nice. There was a variety of them, different shapes, and interesting to see the different perspectives that students have and how they use the materials in order to create their pieces. Last week, we had students in Ms. Potter's Science VI class make edible plant cells. So there, I don't know if you can see in this picture here, but there's kind of a variety of food sources there. But they used them, and obviously, their packets that they have with the essential information in order to construct their own plant cells with all the necessary elements. So it was a pretty unique way for them to, to attack the learning. But I, I can tell you what, they absolutely were able to demonstrate their understanding of plant cells. So that was pretty fun to see. Some of the eighth grade science teachers, just walking around and seeing them engage, particularly in Science VIII, they're using a new curriculum that's much more hands-on and more model-based. It requires students to engage in more discourse and less kind of note-taking and sit-and-get. So you can see some models of the solar system that they were working with. And in the upper right-hand corner, that's from seventh grade science. And our seventh grade scientists right now are working on measuring anything and everything they possibly can with the metric system. So I, I think a word, I think I heard a kid say today, another lab? Because they're just using everything they possibly can to engage in that process. So very hands-on in the science classes this year. Extended Studies is, is participating in another year of their project with RIT. And this is a pretty neat one. I wasn't able to bring the posters, so I just grabbed some pictures of them. But basically, our sixth graders in ESS research inventions, and they research the creative thinking process. And they use that to come up with an invention and do a quick pitch to students at RIT. And then students from RIT pick 10 projects per year throughout Monroe County that they would like to think about funding. Last year, we had two of our projects from 12 Corners Middle School. And this year, again, we had two projects from 12 Corners Middle School that were chosen by RIT students. And the RIT students engage in the full design process. They bring our sixth grade students' ideas to fruition. And throughout the entire creation process, they are interacting with our sixth graders as, as designers and problem solvers. So every step of the way, they're zooming with our sixth graders in order to say, you know, this is what we came up with. Does it meet what you guys were thinking? Give us some feedback. And you can see they've come up with some pretty cool ideas, a lacrosse pitchback machine. The cooling shoes are really neat. Bounce-ahead lacrosse wall and an edda box. So you can even see from the posters that they've created, pretty sophisticated work and an opportunity to, to engage with designers probably at a level that we never could have imagined before. So much more, but just to highlight, we did have an activity fair like the high school this month. So our clubs are up and running. Participation, participation numbers are fantastic. I walked past a chess club, not the chess club, the Academic Challenge Bowl meeting last week. They had 23 students in there. Super excited to, to get going on that. Mr. Knight and Ms. Padilla are working with the Bright Tones, and they're ready to bring singing and dancing back. I was able to see them in the chorus room practicing their moves. It was pretty neat. In class, our tech students finished their Lego engineering project this past week. So you can see some pictures here of what's going on. And even our technology department continues, even through all of this, through COVID, to harvest our plants in the hydroponic greenhouse. Our Spanish intern started last week. She was in Spanish VIII classes, meeting our students, and she's from Chile. So we're excited for her to get started with her work with our students. PE classes, sometimes I overlook this, but I thought this was a really cool thing. I was talking to Mr. Wasserman, and he was telling me how in week one, when they do the 400, the one lap around the track, 108 of his students were not able to actually make the full lap around the track. And last week, 105 of those 108 students were able to make that full lap around the track. So really excited about those gains that we're seeing in our students in all areas of, of the building. And particularly, you know, we can talk about English. Sixth graders are working on their argument skills. And in Ms. Hipper's class, they're doing some creation of games to help study and support their work around vocabulary. Lastly, lots of things upcoming. I talked about our eighth grade activity night. School pictures will be handed out either tomorrow or Thursday in WINTIME. So if anybody needs to have picture retakes, those will take place on Monday. Got a band family night coming up. We have our seventh grade Veterans Day celebration on the 10th. And obviously, no school on the 11th. For our marking period dates are a little bit different than, than the high schools. So we've been talking to kids about the fact that the 10th is really the last day of our marking period, and the 12th is when the second marking period begins. Our musical is just about to launch, so we're excited for that. And we have our L Thanksgiving on the 18th. We have our orchestra and chorus concerts on the 22nd. And then, this is kind of a crazy month, November, for middle schoolers because fall sports have just come to an end. But our winter sports don't actually start until the 29th. So there's, there's quite a break there for our kids. But we have a pretty active or, you know, a pretty packed November. So there's lots of opportunities for kids to get involved in. Questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds. Any questions for Danielle?
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much. As the construction team is getting set up, I just want to say to the four principals, we're two months fully into school, as you all noted. And last year was a year like none of your teachers could have ever anticipated. And at the last meeting, the board received some nice appreciation from the students for the work we do. I would tell you on behalf of the board, we greatly appreciate all the work you and your teachers are undertaking. Parents are stressed, kids are stressed, teachers are stressed. There's a lot going on. And our teachers are showing up every day, doing a great job, working real hard to be kind and figure things out. So we greatly appreciate them and all the work they are doing. It's going to be a long year. We got their back. Tell them to keep working hard, and it's going to be a great year. So thank you. Lou, whenever you're ready with the building team.
Thank you, and thank you again for this opportunity to, to share the work that's been accomplished in this building. Just a bit of a background with French Road. We're actually going to introduce this as Phase Three of the Capitol Project. If you recall, when we were bidding the contract approved by the, or the project approved by the voters in 2000- voters in 2017, we were in 2018, the economy was starting to recover a little bit. There was a lot of investment in infrastructure and in construction, and we actually had to bid French Road's scope of work as an alternate. We needed to do that, and we rebid it, we repackaged it with the reauthorization. So we're here tonight to share the work that we were able to achieve, and give you a sense of, you know, the pride that we have in that work. And I'm really proud to introduce our OECM team, who's here tonight. I'm going to let them do most of the talking. We have Nick Appolito, who's our project manager, joined us during the project. We have Gary Huffman, our project executive. And we have Vic Tommestelli from SEI Design, who's been a longtime partner for the district. We also have David Hallmark here, who's an architect on the project. Who's not here tonight, but I want to give a special thank you to is Francine Wallace. She was the architect, our primary on-the-ground, boots-on-the-ground person. She did a phenomenal job for us. And certainly, we have John Novelli and Rob Luce, who's an integral part of our OECM team, sitting in project management meetings, working through punch lists, just an integral part. I can't thank them enough for the effort. And certainly, Board President Davis, who's an integral part of our OECM team as well, who participated in that. So I'll turn it over to the project team to share all the great work that we were able to accomplish.
Thank you, Lou. And Lou is also being humble, but I think we should also thank Lou, because he has been a very integral part of that team as well, and keeping us on track and making things happen. Again, my name is Nick. I'm with Campus Construction. I've been the project manager, and I've had the luxury of working here at French Road, seeing this project to the end. The team behind me has been very supportive in helping us get there. But I did want to take a little bit of time just to go through the slideshow here and highlight a couple of the things that we have done throughout. Sorry, Lou, I'm having technical difficulties. Oh, I got it. Hang on. Pardon me. So the accomplishments of this project. This was a three-year project, essentially. It was broken up into a bunch of different phases. And with that, there were a lot of things that we needed to figure out. Particularly, though, what we are most proud of is we were able to coordinate classroom work while school was still in session. We worked with the French Road staff here to coordinate any classroom relocations. If there's any benefit to the hybrid learning and remote learning that we had, that was one of the things that did occur, and we were able to take advantage of that in order to expedite some of the construction here. In addition, all of the construction work here at French Road was done on time, and school did open successfully. I do want to point out the giant elephant in the room, the bleachers to your left or right, depending upon where you were sitting. They are not complete, as we see, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a little bit. Finally, all work was accomplished with minimal change orders, and the project was closed out in a timely manner. That doesn't sound like much for you guys, but in our world and in Lou's world in particular, that's huge, because that does not always happen. So specifically, what did we do here? We made a ton of improvements to French Road. Obviously, we didn't build anything brand-new in this school, but we did make a whole lot of renovations and refurbishments here. That started with new art and music suites, straight down the hallway over here. We gutted that area and put in two brand-new music rooms, as well as two brand-new art rooms. We completely gutted the library and renovated the entire space. Hopefully, you had a chance to see that, and you could see how beautiful that turned out. Although this isn't too jazzy, it is a necessary evil of what we do here. We did some HVAC replacement, including replacing a chiller and multiple rooftop units and fans, providing air conditioning in certain spaces, and just making sure that everything is properly climate-controlled here. We did a partial roof replacement in the first year of the project, and that's on the front end of the building, closer to the Edgewood Avenue side of things. We did multiple bathroom renovations, both student and staff bathrooms. We did a full flooring replacement in the multipurpose room. In addition, where I was talking about with the classroom and relocations before, we did ADA countertop and sink replacements in over 20 classrooms. So that helped us get, you know, more code compliant and making things a lot more user-friendly for our students. We provided new LED lighting in all of the classrooms throughout French Road here. And lastly, again, we put in a new bleacher installation here in the cafeteria. Just as we talked about our, what we've provided here, what we did for the project, we did run into some challenges, and we, you know, be remiss if we didn't talk about that. So the first challenge that we did run into was completing the work during the summer and still having to deal with community programs and summer camps that were using the space. You folks here in the Brighton Central School District are amazing in providing access to everyone else to be able to use your facilities, and that's wonderful. In our construction world, that makes for a huge challenge, because we love to have the summer available to be able to do what we need to do. But the team here at French Road was amazing in working with us and trying to coordinate things, and we're still able to have these programs. So although it was a challenge for us, it was still successful for everybody else. Coordinating the logistics of moving classrooms to allow for work to continue during the school year, that was a great challenge with some Herculean tasks, and I would be remiss if I didn't call out John Novelli and Kevin Rollins in trying to help coordinate that. And former principal Allison Ryu really stepped up in trying to coordinate that. That was a huge challenge, but we were able to weather that storm. In addition, working under COVID guidelines and restrictions, it just caused some heartache and challenges here and there, but nothing that everyone else didn't have to work through. And finally, dealing with some supply chain issues that impacted materials. Again, as we are still waiting on part of our bleacher system here, supply chain issues is a great example of what has occurred there. These challenges were overcome, though, by having many coordination meetings between my team, the architects' team, the French Road staff, and having some very accommodating contractors. We couldn't have done it if it wasn't a great team effort. And so I do thank everyone on all of those teams for what you did to get us to the finish line here. That's all the speaking points I have, but I would love to show you a couple of pictures of what we have. If you haven't had a chance to walk around the school, at least we'll be able to get a visual here. So again, here are bleachers.
So in that picture, Nick, obviously, it looks like the bleachers are there. Do you want to do a quick explanation of what we're missing?
I was just about to do that, Larry. So what we are missing right now is, you can see the bleacher structure is there, but the actual seats, the plastic seats that go on the bleachers are still not here. There have been numerous supply chain issues, things that are made with plastic. Then we have issues with some fasteners. Long story short, just like many industries are dealing with things that are not on their shelves anymore, this is something that did bite us. I wish I had a date to tell you when those bleachers were going to be done, but I'd be lying to you if I told you a date right now. So as soon as we know that the truck is on the way, Lou will know, Larry will know, our staff here will know, and we will get those finished ASAP. We wish they were done already, but unfortunately, we are just in the position that we are right now. This is one of the pictures of the library. This turned out to be a beautiful space. Definitely loved the way that Vic's team designed this with the arches around there. Really made for a great use of the space for the students that are here. Oops, excuse me. Just another view of the library from another angle. This is one of the music suites. We also have some art suites. Again, we gutted those spaces and made these exactly how teachers asked. We had a lot of input from our teachers in this project, so we made sure that the spaces that we were going to be turning over were going to be actually what they were asking for, and we are very proud of that. One more art suite for you to take a look at. We did renovate some bathrooms. This is an example of the ADA cabinet and sink replacement. So we didn't take out all of the cabinetry throughout the entire classroom, but where the sinks were located, we did take out that cabinetry, put it in a new sink, put in a brand-new cabinet. And then you could see that we have the curtain underneath the sink to allow for wheelchair access if that was necessary. So 20-plus classrooms in this building were made ADA accessible through this process. Just an example of one of the rooftop units that we put up. And lastly, just one more of our rooftop units. That's all that I had. I'd love to turn it over to Vic, if he has anything to say. We have the FBI.
Thank you, Nick, and thank you to all of you. We don't have a chance to stand before you very often, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to say again, thank you for having us here tonight. Thank you for having us as part of your team and helping you through all of these capital improvement projects. We've been thrilled to be a part of it. Brighton has been a great community to work with, the board, the staff, everyone here has just been a pleasure to work with. So many thanks to, again, Nick and campus for all of their hard work. Lou has been the staple throughout the whole project, and we certainly appreciate all of his efforts. So really, just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you. I'll just echo what Lou said. Special thanks to Rob Luce, John Novelli, Kevin, and whoever else I'm leaving out. Those are the guys that are there every day, as was pointed out by Lou and others, making sure things get done correctly and being on top of things, doing a great job of advocating for our students and our teachers. So greatly appreciate their work.
You know, just to pick up on what Larry said and what's been mentioned, Lou, your leadership in all of this, which you'll be embarrassed by and probably run away from that podium. He's now doing a good job of ignoring us while we're saying it, but your leadership has made all the difference in this as well. But thanks very much to Nick and Vic, Gary, for being here tonight, for presenting, for sharing that great work with us, and everything you've done to be our partners in all of this. But yes, again, to John and Rob, who make it happen, make it happen every day, and thank you again for that. And our building leaders for the work that they do to make sure it can happen and happen safely, accommodating everybody's space needs. And I appreciate, Nick, you mentioning Allison in that also. That makes a big, big difference in buildings. We talked about that last meeting with Matt and Marin at Council Rock, and now Shirley, and of course, what Marin is doing here with Caitlin to accommodate the work as well. We'll have to again, when the seats finally do decide to arrive. So thanks, everybody. You're really making just incredible spaces for our kids. Much appreciated.
I will do a quick reminder for everyone that on December 14th, we'll be at BHS and hear from Dr. Hall and the construction team. And then on January 4th, at TCMS, again, the construction team and Danielle as we go through all this. So this will be at each of the schools. We'll be able to see improvements completed in all of these schools. So very exciting to see the completion of this project that began, doesn't seem like a long time ago, but three years ago. All right, on to the reports section. Thank you again, Lou. On to the report section. First, the financial reports that we've all had a chance to see. Is there anything we need to have Lou head on the financial reports? Okay. They're in the notes and also published. And I think that includes acceptance of the annual independent, do we move that forward as a motion?
Yeah, one motion to accept the financial reports, A, B, C, including the financial statements and the Communication Internal Control matters, executive summary, financial summary, and letter of communication.
Thank you. So we do need a motion for number 7A, the financial reports, motion to approve 7A, A, B, and C.
Shall move? Second?
Moved by Susan, seconded by Karen. Thank you very much. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed. Next up, we have Lila, student representative.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. So I'm going to speak about a few topics. So first, I'm going to give a little debrief of homecoming. Then I'll talk about Red Ribbon Week, as you've already heard from the principals. But, and then finally, I'll finish off what I have to say by looking at the wrapping up of the Brighton Fall Sports season. So overall, homecoming ran very smoothly. As I mentioned in my last report, and Dr. Hall mentioned today, the pep rally and the sports assembly were outside this year for the first time. Being outside was nice. We did have some mic issues, and people were a little, like, rowdier than in past years, but other than that, I felt like being outside worked well. In the meeting with the Student Senate, some, or the class councils came to the consensus that they did like the pep rally better inside, but they thought the sports assembly was really nice outside. On the Saturday, the homecoming parade went well, and then the Bruins won during the night, so that was nice. The students really liked the game at night this year. School spirit felt elevated, and it was cool to have the game under the lights. One concern that students brought up about the homecoming were the floats. They thought the floats are, they were disappointed with how fast the floats were taken down. Typically, the floats need to be dissembled by halftime of the homecoming game, so students felt like the work they put in just went to waste, like, with the floats being displayed for such a limited time. So Executive Council is going to work to try to change this for next year. One possibility is that the floats could visit Council Rock and French Road to share with the younger students in the district before they are taken down. So I personally really like that idea. I'm not sure how the logistics of that would work, but I thought that was a really good idea. So that's pretty much it on homecoming. So next, I want to say a few words about Red Ribbon Week, which is obviously this week. So Red Ribbon Week is like a national program designed to keep kids drug-free. Every year, schools around the nation participate in Red Ribbon Week and build their students up and foster and maintain a supportive community that will last beyond the week. This year's slogan is "Drug-Free Looks Like Me," and BHS has a different way each day of the week that kids show their commitment to a drug-free lifestyle. Today, for example, was Hats Off to a Drug-Free Life, so students wore their favorite hat to school. I saw a lot of participation, and it was really cool. There are also various activities going on this week to help ensure students stay drug-free and know that there's support available to them when they are going through hardship. Lastly, I'm excited to share with you news about our fall sports teams. Our sports teams are all in the postseason right now, so girls tennis has actually already completed their sectional run. If you haven't heard, they won sectionals for the seventh year in a row, which is pretty impressive, and they're now heading to states. Then both girls cross-country and football are number-one seed going into the sectional tournament, which is also really special. Football and girls soccer both won their most recent sectional games, and field hockey was supposed to have their first game tonight, but I think it got postponed due to weather. So yeah, hopefully, the Bruins will pull through, and you can add some more bricks to our collection. I hope we keep seeing lots of fans at, to our events. I know our athletes really appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Lila, very much. I will make note that the girls tennis team is actually playing at Flushing Meadow, which is the home of the US Open, which is really cool. So yeah, that's great. Thank you very much, Lila. Appreciate that.
And good luck to you at sectionals, Lila.
Thank you.
Board of Education reports. And a quick note before we go around, in doing some review amongst the board, just for perspective for people, there's one state committee that we're on that Christina participates on, four at the county level, and 18 different committee, district committees. So there's a bunch of things happening in this district, and we have a lot of board members getting involved in a bunch of things, grateful for all their time. So thank you all. There's a lot of different work out there, and I think the thing to note is we learn probably as much as we're able to provide. We learn a lot about what's going on, so a lot of different things happening out there. Thank you. Labor relations. I think we all managed to miss this last meeting, so there's not going to be an update there. The next one, I believe, is scheduled for November 17th, when I looked at it. Information exchange.
Information exchange on October 13. Representatives from Bavona presented on child abuse awareness and prevention. And for board members, that's available on the Monroe County School Board website, if you want to see that, that session was taped. And then our upcoming meeting is November 10th, and folks from the Holly Central School District are going to be talking about civic readiness. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Legislative.
That's me. We met a while ago on October 6th, and we talked about issues that are affecting all of our districts, such as staff shortages and especially bus driver shortages. And we haven't been, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. McGon, we have not been deeply affected by bus driver shortages in our district.
Well, actually, yes and no. So, but I'm glad you brought it up, because I do want to make a quick comment about that. We were eight drivers out on Monday morning. But what I want the community to know, and we will be communicating this actually in the coming week, is we were just able to cover that, but we would like people to understand that coming very soon to a theater in New Year U will be delayed transportation for students. There's no question it's going to happen at some point. We have plans for backups to our backups and runs that would double up if we needed to. We can get kids to school, but they will be delayed coming to school. We can get kids to school, but they will be delayed coming to school. It has not happened yet, but it will at some point affect us like it has affected other districts. But you are absolutely correct. We are not there yet. We just want people to know that that is definitely a possibility going forward.
And one of the things that's interesting about this, we've been talking about bus driver shortages in Legislative Committee for as long as I've been on. This is my seventh year on the committee. And so the pandemic is not the cause of bus driver shortages. It did force us over the precipice, but the real issue at hand here is how difficult it is to get a CDL license. And so Legislative Committee has been working with our government officials to talk about how we can change the policies around obtaining the license to be a bus driver, because that's actually at the heart of what's affecting our communities. So, continue to work on that. And I meet again with them next week on November 2nd.
Thanks. Next up is Bosse's. The Bosse's rep I know is unavailable to present tonight. We would expect to see him at future meetings. There was a written update, and we will post that for all to see. Other board member reports. Anybody else with any other committee work they would like to update on?
I'd just like to make a note that we've started the school-based equity team meetings. Today, each school, starting this year, is going to be having an equity team meeting instead of just a district-wide equity team. And the hope for that is that by having a smaller group, school-specific, we can make a larger impact and have more meaningful discussion. And I attended the first one today for French Road, and I think it went really well. So I'm not sure if anyone else.
I attended the first one for 12 Corners, and it will be really interesting to fine-tune the work for each developmental stage. I think that that's a great opportunity.
Again, I'll reiterate, and you can comment, Kevin, this was part of a strategy that said, instead of one committee for the district, let's break it up by school, because the needs will be different by each group. Can you explain that?
Yeah, that's exactly it, really. So we have had for several years now a district-wide diversity equity committee, made, I think, really great progress in moving the ball downfield and making significant change and engaging more families in our school community, really thinking about how do we ensure equity for all kids, all families, equitable access to programs, equitable access for children and families to engage fully in the school environment, equity in terms of hiring practices. Really, I think, super amount of work done on a district basis, but the focus this year, based on the blueprint work and our work with outside consultants to the district, was to say, okay, that's, that's really great, and you've done really high-quality work around culture-responsive curriculum and engaging kids differently and thinking about the work that they're exposed to. But, to really make more on-the-ground change for kids and families requires thinking about it at their developmental level, very specifically, and with regard to what is happening in terms of practices, policies, procedures in each individual building, and that'll be different building to building to building. And so engaging more staff members in each of those buildings on those specific discussions will really make a big difference. So yeah, we're excited about that approach for sure, to do things a little bit differently this year. That group, those groups will report out multiple times a year and get together as a large group to share their work between buildings. So still forming, in a sense, a district-wide committee, but really to hear report outs from each individual committee.
Thank you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, and the Hiring Committee, the Hiring Practices Committee, remains a fully functioning committee K through 12. So that, that did not leave the K through 12 realm and go building-specific. That still is a very vibrant committee, looking at our recruitment practices, our retention practices, and the environment that we're creating for staff members in the district, so that over time, our staff will continue to grow towards better reflecting the kids and families that we serve.
Thanks. Great. Just in regards to other board member reports, I'll make a quick note. We had our first audit meeting of the year. We did look at all of the numbers in the financial reports for the past summer, and I think in some cases, September. Continued to be grateful and impressed with the work of Dahlia Watts and Lou Alimo to make sure we are being incredibly fiscal responsible with the taxpayer dollars. And just a very straightforward growth report. Everything is absolutely where it should be. Our next audit committee, I think, is February, if I remember correctly.
I've got one more report. I also met with Curriculum Council.
Thank you.
On October 7th. I'm excited by the work we'll be doing. We have typically been divvied up into three different subgroups, and this year, I think we're working as a larger group on furthering the work of Council Rock Schools Habits of Mind. So it was exciting to hear from Matt Tappan and some other staff members from Council Rock to discuss how Habits of Mind have really transformed how, how teachers and students work together and how students move forward to become independent learners, and moving that work forward through the district K-12. And I just, I think that's a fascinating opportunity, and I'm glad that we have Mr. Tappan and his team to help us lead the way.
Great.
And I was at the first Wellness Committee meeting this past week, and we have some exciting ideas working to support families as well as to support our faculty. So, we're meeting again, actually, in a couple of weeks, which is pretty unusual, to see if we can.
Well, it seems appropriate for the time, so good for that team, for being aware of that. You know, construction, we certainly heard from, and we're trying to wrap up that three-year project, and again, we'll get the five reports out for both the high school and the middle school over the next couple of months, so all set from a construction standpoint. Anything else? Great. We'll go to Nicole Yarles for the BTA.
Hi. Thank you so much for letting us present. We love to be able to share everything that the teachers are doing. And speaking of the Habits of Mind, I know you have the report and all the awesome photographs. Mrs. Flanagan's kindergarten class started with their habit of mind gathering data through all senses. Zero the Hero showed up and brought 10 apples for the 10th day of school, and you can see they looked at smell, touch, taste, look, hear, and then I love the crunch that she added. They came up with words to describe their apples, and really beautiful, the star inside. I think that's just having them brainstorm what they're seeing, what they're hearing, what they're feeling, it was really nice. So we had a short look from Council Rock. At French Road, fifth-grade students in extended studies, they did an ice melt challenge to examine climate change, and they conducted an investigation to analyze how ice melt due to global warming can impact wildlife and homes. They timed the ice melt, recorded water levels, and then all the changes that were happening. And you can see some examples of them photographing their data, their measuring, really nice job. I don't know if you were able to open the link from Mrs. Harp with the, with the robots, with the Dash robots, but it was pretty amazing. So for third and fourth grade tech, they started the school, they checked out iPads and robots, the Dash robots from Bosse's, and they used those to have team-building exercises. They partnered up, wrote software, set up the robots, and then drove them around, and then switched jobs. They also were able to show their families. At Curriculum Night, it was shared with the families what they did, so that was really nice. So I hope you watched the video. Mrs. Isham, the French Road Orchestra students, had a violin performance by Ellen Sonnenberg. And if you've never heard her play, it's really quite beautiful, so I hope you were able to hear that also. At 12 Corners, there was a big shout-out to Dave Luce and the crew, and this was from a teacher. So Vivian Lopez really wanted to recognize everything that they are doing and how helpful it's been for teachers to have, anytime they need something, to have someone come and help them move desks, move boxes, and they were just very grateful for that. Marion Walter, seventh and sixth grade, German classes, I'm going to not pronounce this correctly, learned about Schulthutin, which is a German custom. When you first start learning German, you get a cone filled with candies and full of school supplies to make it a sweet experience. So the kids made their own cones, and then Mrs. Walter, Frau Walter, gave them something sweet to put in their cone. The TCMS Strong, which I know Mrs. Edmunds talked about, they had the, they facilitated the activities to talk about Bullying Prevention Month. They made the visits to sixth-grade classes. Seventh and eighth-grade classes will be having conversations with their wind teachers, and then that's going to be highlighted on the morning show, and she talked about the BB Upstander contest. Mr. Wasserman also talked about the level of fitness and how impressed he's been. So last week, they were able to complete a 2,000-meter run, which some students finish in less than 10 minutes, so bravo to them. Mr. Dennison shared this really amazing project that he did with his seventh and eighth-grade students. They needed to convey four greetings. How are you? What's your name? He provided just short verse of class, and they could create it digitally, or they could use paper. And they created these wonderful cartoons with humor and vignettes within the cartoon. There's a couple of examples. He actually had the students then put together the bulletin board and kind of edit as, as they were going. He liked that they took over the independence of that piece, and he, he said that this is the most fun he's had grading something in a really long time. In June, Mrs. Halligan coordinated the participation of eighth-grade social studies classes with Sarah Chessu's art students in the Nagasaki piece event, and they actually couldn't do it last year because of COVID, and there was a typhoon. So they are saving it, and they're going to present it this year. So Brighton students were able to contribute some of the art on the boats that represent the United States, and then there's a few close-ups of the artwork. It's been busy over at 12 Corners. On Tuesday, so this is back in September, they had a Brighton Support Center Parent Zoom night, in which parents could get help with how to navigate Zoom, how to navigate Parent Portal, how to navigate School G, OneNote, so that was very helpful. And Eileen Kerr wanted to make sure that she did a shout-out to her teaching assistant, Cesaria Loughlin, and they welcomed all new TCMS students in understanding all the platforms, supporting all students with 504 plans and progress monitoring students' progress. So she really wanted to make sure that, that we recognized what an asset this is to the community. The library's open. You saw the video, hopefully, of the library being open. Eighth-grade ELA and social studies classes are using the Green Card Youth Voices books, and they're featuring, it features 10 current and former annals student authors from Brighton. They were able to purchase books from a Brighton Education Fund grant, and they read firsthand accounts of their peers, and really, when they went back to the library, went for those books to be able to read. And there are some pictures. There's four wonderful photographs of students reading those books. At Brighton High School, there was a shout-out to Autumn Hayes Allen. So it hurt, someone stopped into her office first thing in the morning and saw firsthand it was fulfilling all the subrequests and wanted to make sure her efforts were acknowledged and appreciated. The Brighton Counseling Department, so just as Dr. Hall talked about, had their senior parent nights and all the different options. In addition to the parent nights, they're hosting senior office hours through December that are offered four days a week. Seniors can come in and work with a counselor during free periods and after school, and they wanted to make sure they had offered, offering times during the school day for students who are unable to stay after school. This year, they're hosting 11 colleges for instant decision days, which is the most they've ever had. And then we finished with the AIM program, visiting Wickham Farms, and they look like they're having a wonderful time.
Take pictures on that, too.
Yeah.
To your point, a ton of things going on, even just in the first two months, so great work being done. Peter Wegman, PTSA.
Want to clean up for the night?
We got more to go.
Okay. I just wanted to quickly preface this. I think at the last meeting for School Board Appreciation Week, I needed to say a few words. I just wanted to quickly say thank you for everything that you do, especially for the time commitment, as we're approaching the nine o'clock hour. And just to say, I've been teaching for 23 years, and I think the support you provide to PTSA in this district is truly amazing. So again, thank you for the observer status and everything you do.
I appreciate what you're doing here.
So here we go. So I want to start with saying we appreciate Dr. McGowan, speaking at our September 15th PTSA meeting. We found the superintendent's commitment to the student mental health an important step forward for the district. Also, the increase in the graduation rate for the district, along with the closing the achievement graph, is encouraging. For Council Rock, the Council Rock Primary Representative reported that the CRPS PTSA chairs and volunteers were library helpers over the summer. With the start of the school year, they quickly pivoted to volunteering to support CRPS by assisting student flow in the bus loop. The first day of school snacks were also provided to the teachers of CRPS. Council Rock had their Curriculum Nights, and PTSA hosted high school volunteers to show a movie for the students while parents met with the teachers. And of course, Fun Food Friday is beginning. At FRES, the chairs coordinated a Popsicles with the Principals event at 9:01. This was a well-attended event. It was an opportunity to informally meet Mr. Jeffries and Ms. O'Neill on the FRES playground. We also purchased a Welcome Back FRES Friends yard sign for the front of the school to welcome back the students. On Friday night, 17, FRES PTSA Hospitality provided a breakfast for the staff at FRES to celebrate the beginning of the school year, which was well-attended. The FRES PTSA hosted a FRES Family Picnic Night at 9:20. Unfortunately, due to COVID restrictions, we cannot hold PTSA movie nights or roller-skating events. However, we are looking forward to the debut of Bingo Night. TCMS had the first activity night in 18 months, and it was a rousing success. And unfortunately, I don't have more to report from the PTSA rep there. At BHS, PTSA volunteers dropped off a huge basket full of candy, trail mix, granola bars, and more candy to the school on the teacher's first day back. Picture Day was a huge success. As a PTSA, we are continuing to plan to bring engaging speakers, events, and fun activities to the district this year, while we're providing all the support we can to the students and staff. Recently, Spirit War Sale was great and should be delivered to the schools next week sometime. We were planning to run a school, actually, it may have been delivered already. We are now planning to run a second one before the holidays. Also, Betsy Balling, Paddock, gave a great talk on building Brighton's community through restorative practices and social-emotional learning. The video of the talk has been posted on the PTSA website and the Brighton YouTube page, and our DEI community is looking to host a multicultural festival this spring. That's a wrap for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, keep repeating, just a lot of stuff going on. Thank you for all the work of all the PTSA volunteers. Dr. McGowan.
Thank you. First, I'd like to just clarify, and we are sending communication out later this evening. Dan Golden will be, the letter that we sent home earlier regarding social media threats that had nothing to do with Brighton at all and were not received in Brighton, nor were they reported in Brighton by our kids, but there was a viral threat on Snapchat that was concerning to many, and we were concerned that kids likely had read it, and it encouraged school violence. And so we weren't clear enough in that. I wasn't clear enough in that when I sent that out, and we will be sending clarification later tonight that that specifically is what it said. So if kids would like to talk to somebody about that, whether that's a parent or caregiver at school, that was very specifically what it was, was threatening violence at school, not related to Brighton. This was an out-of-state originating threat, and it did go viral and was a concern. Kids probably knew a lot more about it, frankly, than we did long before we did, but I want to make sure parents were aware of that also, so apologies for any confusion there. I guess, sort of to that point, just a quick comment, and you've alluded to this a couple of times tonight, people are pretty cooked, and, you know, the honeymoon ended, probably right around Columbus Day and after homecoming, and the excitement of everybody coming back, and there's a lot of struggle for kids, for families, for adults. Grace can be defined as courteous goodwill. Another definition of grace is a grace period, a period officially extended to somebody for patience in the payment of their bill. And I'm fairly sure most of our community members have probably taken advantage of a grace period, or hoped that when they were pulled over for going a couple miles an hour over, that somebody was patient with them, or when they jar, drop a jar of pickles at Wegmans, that they don't get charged for, rather, somebody helps them clean it up. I know certainly I've been a beneficiary of that before, as I've dropped plenty of things at Wegmans. Synonyms for grace include courtesy, courteousness, politeness, manners, good manners, mannerliness, civility, decorum, decency. civility, decorum, decency, respect, respectfulness, consideration. It's not okay to treat people poorly. I want to say that again. It's not okay to treat people poorly. It's not okay when a school nurse calls you to talk about COVID to treat them poorly in response. It's not okay to treat somebody in the transportation poorly because you're not getting exactly what you want when you want it. Likewise, it's not okay for us to treat anybody poorly in any of the ways that we serve anybody. And so I just mentioned this as a reminder, as I've thought about this tonight through the presentations and all the unbelievable, great work that our staff is doing, all those positives. And I don't want that to be overshadowed by this message. But we'll be writing about this in the coming weeks and days, the patience that we're hoping that people will give, the grace and understanding that we hope to give to kids and to each other and to perhaps dial back a little bit and understand that kids have been off of school for a long time in different ways. They've had a different approach for over a year and a half. And we are extending grace to them and trying to figure out the right way to meet them where they are. And we need to help our staff figure that out and not be so hard on themselves in figuring that out. Because they're doing unbelievable work and we need patience with regard to that. We need patience with regard to each other inside the organization. But we need our community to be patient and graceful and thoughtful in how they are approaching school staff members. They can't expect responses from people at 10 o'clock at night who have their own families to spend time with and provide grace to also. It's exhausting. People are at a tough spot in the pandemic. Nobody wants this to be over more than anybody here. Over the nose is how it goes, is something that Tom Hall will probably say ad nauseam for the rest of his life at this point. But doesn't want to have to say it. Nobody does. We need grace and patience and thoughtfulness. And our school staff is knocking themselves off to support our kids in this community. And they need that patience from people and to be treated well in response. And so we need to keep thinking about that and keep supporting each other and be there for each other, be positive. It's not okay to not be all right towards people, but it's also okay to not be okay. And we're looking for ways to provide more support to our staff in that regard, to our families in that regard. And we will provide that grace and patience, too. And really would like to come together as a community and say, how do we help each other more? How do we provide more support? People are dealing with the aftereffects of the pandemic and the ongoing challenges of a pandemic in lots of different ways and have many different challenges. And we're trying to find ways to be responsive, both to those outside of school and to everybody working here at school, too. So let's come together and figure out how we can do that and how we can support each other together. I'll have more to say about the potential for land purchase in a couple of minutes. But for now, I just would like that to settle with people that thought about being patient and thoughtful with all the great work that's being done here at school. And it's appreciated, and people should know that. So thanks to all of you and the people that work with you, too.
Thank you. Now on to a couple of business issues. Item eight, a motion to approve three bids, corporate bids, one for paper, one for school lunch poultry supply, which is a rebid, and one for school lunch food supply, which is a rebid. Motion to approve the bids. Moved by Andrea, seconded by Christina. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Item nine, approval of first read of the following processes. These are all policies that are based on changes in the law or state regulation. I will read quickly just the titles of the four policies and their numbers, and we will approve all at once. Policy 3420, non-instructional/business operations, nondiscrimination, and anti-harassment in the district. Policy 5676, non-instructional business operations, privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data. Policy 7420, students, sports, and athletic equipment. Policy 6120, personnel, equal employment opportunity. You all have the chance to read any of those four policies. This is a first read. They will come up for a second read at a future meeting. Any questions on any of these four policies? Motion to approve all four policies as noted. Moved by Susan, seconded by Christina. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion passes. Item 10, approval of education law, section 913 resolution as regards a particular employee. I'm sorry, motion to approve? So moved?
I move.
Okay, Karen?
Second.
Second is Andrea. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed. Item 11, approval of settlement agreement for a particular employee as discussed. And motion to approve.
So moved?
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by?
Esther.
Esther, thank you very much. It's hard with these masks. I'm sorry, everyone. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Okay, Kevin's going to go up. This is now item 12, discussion of the purchase of property adjacent to the Brighton High School. Kevin's just going to do a quick overview and just to give at least an initial understanding of the opportunity that's been presented to us.
Well, the good Reverend Dr. Hall has always wanted a parsonage right next to school so he could just not have a commute and be right there. So we have an exciting opportunity. I probably should dispel that rumor very, very quickly before that becomes what we're doing. So an opportunity presented itself for us to purchase property right next to BHS from 12 Corners Presbyterian. The Park Center Properties obtained an independent appraisal, approached the district about possibility of purchasing parcels of land owned by the Presbyterian Church. And so there are two parcels. If you take a look, at the top of the picture, letter B is directly next to the high school parking lot. So our board, every year, lines up for the homecoming parade. Just on the other side of the letter B, right in that church parking lot, I can almost picture Martha and Frank standing right at the top of the parking lot. Well, that entire swath right there of where we would line up, where everybody's lined up for the homecoming parade and that side of the driveway, that outbuilding, the small structure that is right there, in other words, Dr. Hall's apartment, and the grass stretch. Again, I'm going to cause rumors. It's not Dr. Hall's apartment, but used by the church. That whole property right there, that grass in between our parking lot and that side of the church parking lot, that rectangular portion, letter B, is one parcel. It's .92 acres. The second parcel is right behind what is commonly referred to as the JV baseball field. And if you can picture back there, directly behind the church parking lot, there are trees, there's lots of, I would call it politely, a laydown area for some of our equipment and materials, batting cages. The visitor dugout is probably frankly right on the corner of that letter C right there, behind at the back of the JV baseball field. So that green space right there and the parcel B are the two that we're talking about. The opportunity really is for us to think about this in terms of how do we re-figure our own parking lot area? And this would all be in planning we would do later, but this is a unique opportunity. And to really have more space that is right now than contiguous to the space we own. So the JV baseball field behind there, the trees and below the parking lot that would be in front of our maintenance building, that is obviously already our property. This would expand our green space behind the baseball field right there, behind that parking lot. And then the letter B portion, give us the opportunity to think about the parking lot and the exit from our parking lot that currently, I would not say any one of us here feels wonderful about when trying to particularly make a left turn out onto Wynton after events. But if you looked at it lined up with Newton, perhaps there's a possibility to create a better intersection right there for people to exit directly across from a street. And we would be able to revisit, be able to revisit, I can't promise anything, the conversation of a traffic light in that spot. It is a county road, and so we'd have to work through the county again to look at that. Part of the problem with that before is it wasn't lined up as an intersection with anything. Our parking lot was directly in front of that. A really unique opportunity to pursue this purchase. The two, this is just a description, again, this is all posted. I'm not going to read this all at you, but for the community to take a look at. This is a description that would be used in the overview of this in terms of the topography and how that lines up with the property, description of each of the lots. And there are no structures on the second site. The costs, representation, engineering, project management, administrative expenses are a total of $22,000, and the appraised value is $400,000, so the asking price is $422,000. The source of funds for this that we would be recommending to you is out of our Building Reserve Fund. It currently is funded at $6.5 million. It requires voter authorization, though, to withdraw from that. So although we have the money there, obviously $400,000, we have $6.5 million, voters would have to approve withdrawing to purchase the property. I'd like to clarify, though, at this moment, and this will come up several times, I'm sure, the purchase of Brookside, although we'll talk about in a minute how that will help fund our capital reserve over time, and we'd like to look at that at the same time as this purchase. These are two separate interactions. And people, I'm sure, will question, why did you not have a vote for the sale of a property while you have to have a vote for the purchase of property? It is because that is what the law prescribes. The law required you as a board to act on the purchase of the property without a vote, unless the community compelled you to have a vote through a petition process. And so you did that as a board. It was actually your responsibility. You didn't have a choice in that matter. In this case, you also don't have a choice. You have to have a voter approval to withdraw money to purchase the property. That is a requirement. The appraisal used as a basis was prepared by Midland Appraisal Associates, and the market value defined as the most probable price which a property should bring in a competitive and open market under conditions requisite to a fair sale. Keep in mind also, this is not property that we would like other people to have the opportunity to purchase. So like most property owners, if you have an opportunity to purchase property next to you to control the development of said property, you'd want to jump onto that opportunity so that it is not sold to another entity and something else done with it that might not be what you would want as a neighbor. We don't have any indication that anybody's looking to do that, by the way, or that somehow there's going to be some other use that would be objectionable to us. But it's an opportunity to protect our stake in that border property as well. I mentioned the legal authority again. The school board must obtain real property by gift, grant, device, or purchase. So it's not being gifted to us, but we have to then by purchase authorize by means. School authorities of school districts are authorized to purchase property that are necessary for school purposes. But the procedures on the right-hand side is that we have to receive a fair market appraisal. You pass a resolution authorizing the district to enter into negotiations with the owner, into a contract for the purchase, and then prepare and deliver purchase and sale agreement with contingencies. And one of the contingencies is voter approval, and that typically would require 60 days. So the contract would have that as a contingency. So the timeline that we're proposing, this is just the first time that we're introducing this as a concept. We would like to talk about this further on November 9th and advertise to our community that is a scheduled community forum night, the opportunity for community members to come, ask us additional questions, for us to explain it further in any way that people are interested in us digging into. And then we would ask the board to adopt a resolution to call a special district meeting for the purpose of acquiring real property. And the notice is described there as well, what that needs to look like. We would have then that public hearing on January 18th and propose a vote on January 25th. I'm sorry, the proposed date for the special meeting, and then we would have the vote. Lou, do we have a sense for the date of the vote? I'm sorry. The 25th, I'm sorry. So, oh, I'm sorry. The special meeting is the vote. So the hearing would be on January 18th, and the special meeting is what the vote would be on January 25th. My apologies. Then we would also, at that vote, suggest that the board put up her vote to the community the approval of a new capital reserve. And current reserve is funded at its limit. So in other words, there's no more room to put funding there. But we would like a new reserve, one to put your own surplus into, but also the proceeds from the sale of Brookside. You could determine at that point to what extent, how much. We haven't determined with the sale of Brookside what exactly we would use that funding for, although we've certainly intimated that capital improvements throughout the district could be well-funded, local share of capital improvements, well-funded from the proceeds of that sale. But we'd want to make sure that, you know, we're discussing with you and the community what portion of that, all of that, most of that, whatever it might be. Either way, we need to establish a new capital reserve to have a place for those proceeds to go to whatever extent that you suggest they do that. And then a recommendation for the board to consider establishing a capital billing reserve to have an estimated useful life of 10 years. Again, those are the parameters that you put on when you put them up for a vote. And that resolution could be considered in the special meeting. Again, the vote as a second proposition. Any questions for me?
No.
Nobody has questions at 9 o'clock at night. I'm not saying you're not thorough. We've talked about it.
We'll have the chance to get updates with regards to Brookside after November. So, you know, we'll get some of that.
Right. This is just the first step. Hey, good news, we can purchase property. No more jokes about Tom Hall's apartment. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, as regards item, what are we at now? Item 13, thank you, Kevin. Item 13, the consent agenda. We've got four notes on here. Let's see, approval of personnel changes, approval of the Committee on Special Education Report, approval of the Committee on Preschool Special Education Report, and the fundraising activities. In this case, the particular activities of the Brighton Basketball Boys and Girls Booster Club sponsorship packages, which looks like they'll be made available on October 27. Any questions on any of those items, A through D, in regards to the consent agenda?
I would just need to abstain from voting from item A as I have a relative on the list.
Thank you very much. So actually, then what we'll do for the consent agenda, we'll do each one separately. And then the first one, there'll only be six people voting, and we'll do it that way. But I'm sorry, Jolene, you had something to go?
I do have, I picked up that we have a position at the high school in the nurses' office. And there was a resignation and assignment, and it was the same name. And I was wondering if that was how it was supposed to be or if that was a mistake.
I believe it is how it's supposed to be, but can you give me the letter and the number?
Six B is the assignment.
Okay. I think it's the same person. I think yes, two different positions.
Oh, okay.
Right. So it's not a reassignment?
I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
So to be clear, it is correct as listed. It was just a unique situation based on the timing.
I think the point is you're approving the appointment, which happened, and then the resignation, which happened quickly after that.
And I read it as someone was appointed after a resignation. I read it.
I got it.
Thanks, okay.
You bet.
Thank you for looking at that. Okay, so for consent, item 13, consent agenda, just letter A, approval of personnel changes. Motion to approve.
So moved?
Moved by Andrea?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. That passes 6:0. I will do 13B, C, and D together and say for any of those, any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Susan. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. One last item before we adjourn, and this will be quick. I want to give a special thanks to Kyle Gregor, Bill Moyer, Mike Paxton, and Dan Goldman. They're the ones who have to set up this whole thing for us. They get here before us, and they have to stay after us. And they'll be doing this again at the high school on the 14th of December, and then again at TCMS on January 4th. So my thanks to the four of you for setting everything up. It's greatly appreciated. We just show up and everything works. It's outstanding. So thank you very much. Now, finally, item 14, motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Jolene.
Second.
Seconded by?
Everybody.
By everybody, but I'll give it to Esther, seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.